Uh, looking down the road for snow, Trenton is expected one to four, I believe, or one to seven, uh, depending on where, north or south.
Do we have a quorum?
I do believe we do have a quorum. We have Ms. Caldwell Wilson, Mr. Rodriguez, and Mr. Blakely, as far as I can see. I believe Mr. Michelle may be here by telephone. Uh, if you'd like to see-
Yes, I would like, um, for you to, um, ask the IT people to make sure that they put, post the, um, executive session notice on the screen. That's the first order of business this evening. Um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings at Pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in the City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call, Mr. Conlon.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
Present.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Listen.
Ms. Vaughn? Council President McBride?
Present.
City Clerk Conlon is here. Mr. Klose?
Present.
Thank you, sir. Council President would you like me to call the directors?
Yes, please.
Mr. Cruz?
Good evening, President.
Mr. Cherry?
Good evening, I'm present.
Present.
Mr. Bridges?
Present.
Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Douglas?
Good evening, President.
Mr. Daniels?
Good evening, President.
Dr. Lopez?
Good evening, I'm present.
Mr. Rondertieri?
I'm present.
Ms. Richardson?
Good evening, I'm present.
Mr. Lavenbergh?
Present.
Mr. Cruz is acting Director of Department of Finance. We could all bow our heads for an invocation. Almighty Father, we ask for your wisdom and guidance during this council session. We also ask you to remember Officer Brian Sicknick, who gave his life three hundred and sixty-four days ago, uh, three hundred and sixty-four days ago in the line of duty. Uh, we also ask that you protect all of our police officers and firefighters in the carrying out of their duties. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
They all rise for a flex lip. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council President, my understanding you wish to move the executive session resolution up to the front of the docket?
Yes, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, if IT could actually post the executive session, um, notice that the council will be in executive session. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, the city council is going to be entering executive session, uh, for a period of time. Uh, we will be returning to the meeting. Anticipate will probably be in there anywhere from thirty to forty-five minutes, uh, maybe a little bit longer, but we will be back to here. Uh, the IT has posted the executive session notice onto the screen. Uh, we thank you. Uh, do I have a motion for executive session?
Some of the, some-
A motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. I have a second by Ms. McBride. Call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn? Council President McBride?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned to executive session at five thirty-four PM. We will return upon completion of executive session. We ask that you join us back at that time. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you, uh, when the council resumes its regular session. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn, before we go on, did you get your information that you requested from Mr. Klosey in reference to the budget? And Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson, did you receive your information, um, from Mr. Klosey in reference to the executive order?
Yes, I did receive-
Yes, I did.
Thank you, Council President.
I am ready when you are, Council President.
Yes, you may, you may call the, uh, roll, uh, Mr. Conlon, please.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Blakely?
Present.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Harrison?
Present.
Mr. Michelle?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Listen.
Ms. Vaughn?
Present.
Council President McBride?
I'm present.
The clerk is present. Mr. Klose?
Present.
Mr. Cruz?
Present.
Mr. Cherry?
Present.
Mr. List?
Present.
Mr. Bridges? Mr. Bridges is acting Ms. Samuel? Uh, you have a really bad connection, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Wilson?
Present.
Mr. Douglas?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Present.
Dr. Lopez?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Rondertieri?
Present.
Ms. Richardson?
Present.
Mr. Lavenbergh?
Present.
Mr. Cruz is acting as Finance Director. If the President would like me to proceed to the docket?
Yes, there's a couple, um, housekeeping items, uh, uh, one being the, um, the, uh, the notice to the mayor to come in front of the body to discuss the, um, the radios for the vehicles and, um, how long, uh, that should take. Mr. Klosey, um, will we be able to get that?
Uh, Council President, uh, I would frame the motion thusly. Um, the person is, whoever sponsoring it will move pursuant to NJSA forty colon sixty-nine A dash thirty-seven point one to require the mayor to appear before council at its next conference meeting to provide all information and documentation as to why Mercer County has not provided the radios and equipment previously agreed upon on the timetable previously agreed upon. And the clerk shall turn notice to the mayor in accordance with this motion. And there's a request for a second.
Yes, I'll, I'll move that. I'll move the motion.
A motion by Council President McBride. I have a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Council President, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes.
Okay, and this is a motion pursuant to forty sixty-nine A dash thirty-seven point one to require Mayor Reed Gussior to appear for, come before council, uh, to explain why the Mercer County radio system is not installed. I will take the transcript and make the, uh, official motion per Mr. Klosey's verbatim. Uh, do I have a second for the motion? I'll now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Councilwoman, you are mute.
I ca- I can't hear you, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Stop flirting, Robin, and answer the call.
Yes! Yes!
Thank you.
Thank you for the levity, Council President, and Council President McBride.
Yes.
I will send the letter to the mayor, uh, by, uh, hopefully tomorrow. If we're not closed by snow, it'll be first thing Monday morning. Uh, I'll give him notice by email as well. Uh, Klosey, if you have, uh, the verbiage you would like in the letter, please forward it to me. Thank you.
I will email something over to you.
I appreciate that, sir.
Mr. Conlon, um, the first two ordinances, um, I think you have to hold up the reading or something, um, because they wanted to pull them on Tuesday for ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine and twenty-one dash thirty?
Uh, yes, so, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing indefinitely for, uh, let me get, let me bring the res- let me bring my apologies. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is, uh, supposed to be the public hearing for ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-nine, a bond ordinance, amending bond ordinance number ten dash thirty-four, finally adopted by the City Council of the City of Trenton, New Jersey, on June seventeen, two thousand and ten, to amend Sections three, eight, and four therein. I have motion by Council President McBride to adjourn the, uh, please- Uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you are not on council and you are not being, uh, being addressed by council, please mute yourselves at this time. Thank you. I have motion by Council President McBride to adjourn the public hearing indefinitely. Do I have a second?
For which one? I'm sorry.
This is, uh, they're actually both being adjourned, uh, at the request of the-
By the administration.
So, uh, this would be, uh, for, this is for the bond ordinance, uh?
The administration wanted to- Yes, the administration wanted to pull these two, but because of the second reading, we, we had to, um, suspend the public, uh, hearing.
Oh, okay. I got it.
So I have a motion by Council President McBride. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. I think she technically won the buzzer. Uh, I will not call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Uh, the hearing has been adjourned indefinitely. I'll actually put an advertisement in the paper for that. Uh, next we have resolution, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty, an ordinance vacating public rights of a portion of Lombard Alley. Do I have a motion to post, to adjourn the public hearing indefinitely?
So move.
Mr. Blakely? I have a second by Ms. Vaughn. Let's get my notes. Call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Public hearing is adjourned indefinitely. And, uh, Council President, would you like me to proceed to the resolutions?
Yes.
First, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-seven, a resolution designating the official newspapers for all the municipal notices and advertising.
President McBride?
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to add to Trentonian, uh, to, um, an amendment to, uh, this resolution, to add to Trentonian newspaper as a, um, newspaper of record.
Do I have a second to Mr. Blakely's motion?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Now call the roll. This is to amend, uh, this is not the actual final vote. This is to, uh, add an amendment to the resolution, uh, adding the Trentonian as official newspaper in the city of Trenton. I'll call the roll. This is to amend, to add Trentonian as official twenty-one dash five forty-seven. I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, a second by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, the, uh, Mr. Blakely?
No, I didn't second it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison, thank you. Uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Blakely, your votes are?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Rondertieri?
Fuck me.
Do I have a motion to introduce Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-seven?
So move.
So move.
I have motion by Council President McBride. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, can I take that as a second?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I have motion by Council President McBride, a second by Council President, or, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. Uh, Mr. Blakely?
I'm gonna be abstaining.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries Trenton Times as the official newspaper of the city of Trenton. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-eight, a resolution seeking referendum on reclassification of the Trenton local school district from type one to type two. This, this amendment is co-sponsored by Ms. Vaughn and Mr. Rodriguez. Uh, ladies and, uh, council, do you mind if I take that as the first and second? Uh, Ms. Vaughn and Mr. Rodriguez co-sponsors first and second?
Yes, so move with you.
Thank you. Any objections from the floor? Motion passed by unanimous consent. Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Rodriguez be first and second. Council President, would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
No.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four, two, three. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five forty-nine, a resolution reappointing Ann LeBeige as Commissioner of the Trenton Parking Authority.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Vaughn, a second by Council President, would you like to second?
Yes.
I know, Council President, should I call the roll?
Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Blakely?
No.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes. Yes, go right ahead.
Mr. Um, Mr. Conlon-
Yeah, there's an echo. Somebody, somebody's rebroadcasting. If IT can find that, please, because it is interrupting with the council and the votes. And that might, if, if they continue to unmute themselves, please disable the microphone, uh, because I can't have the votes interrupted. Mr. Harrison?
I said no.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't hear it with the, with the interference. Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to three. Congratulations to Ms. LeBeige. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five five zero, a resolution appointing Dr. Joseph I. Mammon as Commissioner of the Trenton Parking Authority. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Council President McBride, a second by Ms. Vaughn. And I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrison?
Abstain.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And, uh, uh, Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to one with two abstentions. Congratulations to Dr. Mammon. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five five one, a resolution reappointing Samuel K. Compo as Commissioner of the Trenton Parking Authority. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson, a second by Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Blakely?
Uh, come back to me.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Councilman Harrison? Councilman Harrison, are you on the line?
No. Can you hear me? No.
Okay, we hear you now.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Blakely?
I'm gonna abstain.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to two with one abstention. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five five two, a resolution appointing Nancy Ugaldes as Commissioner of the Trenton Parking Authority. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have motion by Ms. Caldwell Wilson. Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to-
Yep, I second it.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to one with one abstention. Next, we have Resolution twenty-one dash five fifty-three, but I have a question for Mr. Klosey. Mr. Klosey, the Trenton Parking Authority only has so many spots, uh, which are, um, uh, available for council appointments. We have actually just filled the last spot. Uh, can, can we proceed?
I saw, I had nothing to do with the resolutions, but Mr. Bridges mentioned to me today that there were more resolutions on than there were spots to fill, and my understanding was that was going to be addressed. I didn't have anything to do with the process, so I think maybe Ms. Samuels could tell us what, you know, what the intention was, just, just-
Excuse, excuse me, but I would like to chime, I would like to chime in. Miss, um, Mr., Mr. Conlon?
Yes, ma'am.
The four positions, the four positions has been taken, and so therefore the other, the other two, um, applications are, um, non-enjoyed, so, um, we can move on.
Yeah, Council President?
Not fair. That's wrong.
That's- Council Pres- Council President?
Mr., Mr., Mr. Conlon?
Hello? Council President, I'm, I'm saying again, I, I, my vote was, I, I looked at the wrong spot.
Going on, Mr. Conlon, I don't know who's, who's talking this several conversations.
You hear me? Hello?
Yes, oh, okay.
Okay.
Councilman Harrison?
Yeah, right. The last one was twenty-one, five, five, three, or two?
Five, five, two, sir.
Okay, my, sorry, my vote was no.
Okay.
I looked at the wrong, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong spot. I thought you said three, five, five, three. I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong spot. My answer, my vote would have been no.
Okay, the vote record for twenty-one dash five, five, two is four to two with one abstention. Motion so carries.
All right, so Mr. Mr. Conlon, five, uh, twenty-one dash five, five, three and twenty-one dash five, five, four are non-enjoyed. So, um, um, I guess, um, we can either, um, move on because the slots have been filled.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next, we have-
Council Pres- Council President, Council President? Hello, Council President?
Yeah, yes, 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 Councilman Mouchau.
Everybody has a chance to be voted on, so if these people were put at the last, you mean they wouldn't have had a chance to get on? We, we can't do that. You can't say because these are the last ones to, for council to vote on, uh, uh, you're gonna void them out. If they were the last ones who just voted on, then they would be void, voided out. We can't do that.
There, the, the positions have been filled, Councilman Mouchau.
Yeah, but if, yeah, but if the positions were done that way, this is done wrong. You can't do that.
It wasn't, it wasn't done wrong. The vote was cast.
It's done wrong. Don't tell me it wasn't done wrong. If the names, if the other ones fell in the front, they would be supposed to get on. You can't do that.
The vote has been cast, sir.
You can't do that. You can't do that. I'm obstructing this.
All right. Um, if, if-
That's a certain trick to play on another body.
There's, there's no more positions to be filled, sir.
But you should have, if, if we voted on the other ones, vote the first, the other ones wouldn't have had a chance either. You can't do what you just did. That's a lawsuit. That is a lawsuit.
Another one.
Another one. Another one.
All right. Yep. There's a lot of talking in the background, Mr. Uh, Conlon.
Yeah, I know. I found it, ma'am.
What'd you put them all on for?
Excuse me, could you, IT, could you please help? There's a lot of people in here, and I have multiple duties. Uh, if we can get people who are not on council muted. Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Or do you want me to vote on the two resolutions? I mean, the majority of council voted the other positions. If we vote, I mean, it, it's up to you guys. What do you want to do? Uh, we can vote them.
I mean, if they, if they, if they want to, um-
I'll read them into the record and vote, ma'am. Is that what you want?
Uh, yes, we could, we could, we could, I'll put it on the record.
Yes, ma'am. This next is Resolution twenty-one dash five, five, three, a resolution reappointing Harry Ray as his Commissioner of the Trenton-
I have a question. I have a question. If they, if they get a majority of the vote, uh, do they, I mean, are they placed on the, um, uh, of the, uh, uh, on the, on, will they have force, right? Like, are we voting on things that, I mean, I, listen, I don't think-
It, it has no, it, it's not, it's, it has no validity. The, the, the seats has been filled. If they wanna, uh, they wanna force a vote, then we'll vote, but the votes are already tallied.
So can I have a, can I have a, um, uh, uh, an opinion from the law department on, on this matter? Because
you know, who would take precedence? Who, who would take precedence over, uh, if we vote all of them on?
Um, who would take precedence? That's a question for the law department or Mr. Klosey, or and Mr. Klosey.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Ms. Samuels initially, and then we'll try to sort it out. Again, I was in the impression this was all worked out today.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna, I wanna-
Council President, would you like me to try and respond?
It, 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 it's-
Can you hear me? This is Sally.
It's, it's not, it's not necessary, but the council, they want, want, um, explanation, but the seats have been filled. So, it, you know, go, you can, uh, do what you have to do.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, I just wanted to say that, um, as the votes were being cast, because I was just trying to gather my notes, um, I, I, I was concerned that we had too many reservations for the spots. And, and quite frankly, what should have been, um, done was that, um, councils, council has five appointments. And, and one of the five, um, really, uh, is not an appointment because the person is still on the board, their term hasn't ended. So technically, council had four, and it would have been better, uh, better for council to have determined collectively, uh, who the four people that they were gonna, you know, appoint to the board, you know, would have been, instead of having, uh, five or six resolutions for four spots. And so, uh, so, uh, you know, it is, it is my opinion that, that council has maybe opened itself up to ridicule, criticism, or maybe even legal challenge. Uh, I don't know that for sure. I, you know, we'd have to research it further. Um, but, uh, it would have been best, it would have been best maybe just to have the four and not have all of the resolutions present, presented, and because you have more than, more than, uh, than you need, then, you know, you may, uh, either want to rescind those votes on those four and then go back collectively to the body.
We're not rescinding anything. That, that's not even, that's not even a choice, and that's bad, uh, that's a bad opinion that you've given. Um, if you, if, uh, Mr., Mr. Conlon, they want a vote on the last two, just move to the vote.
Resolution twenty-one dash five, five, three, do I have an introduction?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Harrison, second. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Caldwell Wilson?
No.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride? Council President McBride.
No.
Resolution fails by a vote of three to four. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five-five-four, a resolution reappointing Andrew Warwick as Commissioner of the Trenton Parking Authority. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Mister Michelle. Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
No.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
Will of council has spoken, this resolution fails by a vote of four to three, there are no more seats to fill. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash zero-zero-one.
Council President.
Council President, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Council President.
We're, we're moving on through the docket.
Yeah, Council President, I think some of you on the council should have recused yourself regarding this.
Mister, Mister Colin, continue, please.
Yes, ma'am, next we have Resolution twenty-two dash zero-zero-one, a City of Trenton Annual Meeting Notice memorializing the twenty-twenty-two scheduled meetings of the City Council ABC Board and Board of Health of the City of Trenton. Uh, I think actually this might be on the consent agenda, hold on one second. It is on the consent agenda, my apologies, next resolution is twenty-one dash five-five-eight. This is a resolution for member participation in a cooperative pricing system. A resolution authorizing the City of Trenton to enter into the New Jersey Cooperative Purchase Alliance Cooperative Pricing Agreement. I have a motion, and there is a typo, there's an extra line in there that says resolution number, it shouldn't be there. Um, do I have a, uh, do I have a motion?
For which one is this, twenty-one dash five?
Yes, ma'am, all right, let me bring it up, there's a lot going on. This is, uh, twenty-one dash five-five-eight. This is to participate in the member cooperative pricing agreement.
So move.
A motion by Council President McBride, do I have a second?
So move.
Second.
I have a second by Mister Blakely. I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five-thirty-four. This is a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Charles McKinsey versus City of Trenton in a total amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Do I have a motion?
So move.
So move.
A motion by Vaughn, actually, Ms. Vaughn, you had the first, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Blakely is the second, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Uh, no vote.
Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of sixty-zero, one no vote. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five-sixty-one, a resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Marion S. Contreras Passat versus City of Trenton in the total amount of sixty-five thousand dollars, do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Mister Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mister Harrison, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight twenty point four at sec, to real auction dot com LLC to host online tax sales for a period of one year from one, one, twenty-twenty-two to twelve thirty-one twenty-twenty-two for the City of Trenton Department of Finance, Division of Tax, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand dollars through RFP twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five. I have a motion.
A question, why are we reading off the consent agenda?
Uh, this is not, this is twenty-one dash five-sixty-four, which was asked to be roll called.
Oh, I, I have consent on there, okay.
Uh, it's actually the line above is, was on the consent, twenty-one dash five-sixty-three. So if there's a typo in the docket, I apologize, but it is, uh.
I, 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 um, I had asked for this to be roll called, um, the, the properties on the tax sale list.
Uh, I do need a motion, I just need a motion first before we go, uh, motion. That you, Mister Harrison?
Yes.
So move.
I have a motion by Mister Harrison, I have a second by Ms. Colwellson. Council President, Ms. Vaughn would like to be right now.
Um, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Oh, 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 actually, um, yes, I did roll call this, but, um, I could see, I thought it was the list of, um, I thought they were proposing, I, I was totally incorrect with my assumption here. Um, but it's just the contract with the company to, um, facilitate the, um, the sales. So I'm fine, we can move forward with the vote, um, Council President.
All righty, Mister Conlin.
Mister Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
Yes.
Mister Harrison.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution carries by a vote of seven to zero. Next we have Resolution twenty-one dash five-sixty-eight, a resolution awarding a contract with fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap eight dash twenty point four at sec to Isles Inc. for a period of one year from the time of award for Trenton Streets Teams social services in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars to RFP twenty-twenty-one dash forty-two. I have a motion.
So move.
Um, which, Council President.
I'm getting, I'm getting, as fast as I can, I gotta, I can only do one thing at a time, so, one second.
Just tell me which one.
The twenty-one dash five-sixty-eight, ma'am. I have a motion by Mister Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Colwellson.
Uh, uh, yes, um, Council President, may I? Um, is Dr. Lopez on the line?
I'm here, Council President, can I respond?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, I'm here, Councilwoman Vaughn.
So can you, um, explain, uh, this partnership or, or his contract with Isles and, uh, what the, what, uh, service they're going to be delivering, exactly what the street, the Trenton Streets Teams, uh, is?
Well, sure, so, um, Isles was actually the sole respondent to the RFP, and when we did the evaluation, they were in alignment with our four specific strategies to reduce, uh, violence in Trenton. Um, and so the four, um, major strategies.
Oh, I don't mean to interrupt, Ms. Lopez, but you said something very interesting, that Isles was the sole respondent. Um, so, I believe per the, uh, uh, contracts law, uh, did you go back out twice, or you just accepted the first, um, when there's one respondent with, uh, during the first, um, uh, advertisement of the project, or, um, uh, you have to go out a second time to assure that, um, uh, that there is no further interest in the, um, in the, uh, project. Did you do that, or you just accepted the first, uh, was this?
We only have to bid once, Councilwoman, and so we were in, we were in alignment with, um, the bidding project.
I want, I, I want this in, uh, um, I, I know, we, we went through this before. You have to go back out the second time when there's only one bidder. Uh, Mister Klowgi, I would want that to be, um, I'm, uh, or, uh, Mister Business Administrator, I know that this happened once before with a, a previous contract. When there is a sole bidder on a con, respondent, it is the obligation, you must go back out a second time to market, to ensure that you cast a wider net. But you, you did not go back out the second time, that's what you're telling me, and that's concerning, and that's in violation of New Jersey contracts law.
Is that a comment or a question, Councilwoman?
No, that's a fact, that's a fact.
Okay, I defer to the legal department, because I'm not going to argue with you today, woman.
So the statute, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. So I don't even know why you're, I don't even know why you're going there. I'm asking, uh, a serious, I'm, I'm addressing a serious matter pertaining to the law. So that's not a, to, to debate, so, is it, so who's on the line, Mister Klowgi? Uh, can you please, um, uh, and this, and the Business Administrator, um, address this issue? That when, what, what is the process? Or what does the law, the provisions in the law, uh, guidance that it provides when there's a sole respondent to a government contract? I believe it has to go out, but you know, I'm not the legal expert, I'm not, you know, I believe it has to go out the bid a second time.
Mister Klowgi.
Do I have to pull the statute myself?
Mister Klowgi, are you on the line? Mister Colin, Mister, Mister Klowgi's left the line?
I'm looking for him, ma'am. He might just be muted, you know, he's still here.
He might be on mute.
Uh, no, hold on, wait, he might have just dropped out to come back in.
Uh, yeah, we, we've gone down this road once before, um, with, I don't want to mention the contractor, but, um.
Mister, uh, Mister, Mister Conlin, um, we come back to this when Mister Klowgi resolves.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lopez, we'll come back to, but, uh, in the meantime, I will search for that statute, because, uh, it, it clearly states in the New Jersey contracts law that if there's only one respondent to a, an RFP, you must go about, you must go back out to marketplace again for a second round, thank you.
All righty, so we'll come back to twenty-one dash five-sixty-eight, Mister Conlin, um, you may continue.
Yes, ma'am, next is Resolution twenty-one dash five-three, a resolution authorizing. Number one to the contract with the Anuzi Group LLC to conduct additional demolition of one hundred Hart Avenue, do I have a motion?
So move.
A motion by Mister Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Colwellson. Mister Blakely.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to make, I ask a question, I have the information that they requested regarding the Hart Avenue demolition. Council President, do you want me to proceed with the vote?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, Mister Blakely.
Yes.
Ms. Colwellson.
Yes.
Mister Harrison.
Yes.
Mister Michelle.
Yes.
Mister Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Uh, this is the, uh, the change on the demolition, um, yes, 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 yes.
Council President McBride.
Abstain.
Resolution carries by a vote of sixty-zero, one abstention. Mister Klowgi, are you back on the line yet, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, we're going to go back to Resolution twenty-one dash five-sixty-eight. Um, Ms. Vaughn had a question, say, indicating that she believes that if there's only one bidder, that it has to be rebid pursuant to the local public contracts law, because she was asking for a legal.
I'm sorry, which, which one are we talking about?
This is twenty-one dash five-sixty-eight, this is, uh, for the Isles, uh, for the mental health services, uh, for the, the Trenton, I'm sorry.
Now, I, I will pull the statute, um, what I, what, what I'm asking, uh, Mister Klowgi, if you can verify for us, um, this contract was, what, what, I mean, this contract, of course, went out to RFP, and it was only one respondent, which was this, uh, this particular organization, Isles Inc. Um, the, the only, the sole responder, there were no others, to, to a one point one million dollar contract. Um, um, and, um, and I remember that we ran across this once before with another vendor that was the sole respondent, and we found in the, in the, in one of the statutes in the New Jersey contracts law, that when that happens, uh, we're obligated to go back out for a second time just to ensure that, um, that, uh, that they are in fact the only, uh, interested party. So, um, but Mister Doc Lopez, uh, clearly stated on the record that this only went out once, and this, and this, uh, organization is only bidder on this contract. So I need to, I need to make sure that it goes out.
Bitter, this was, this was done pursuant to a fair and open process, an RFQ, was it not?
Yeah, it was going to, right, correct.
Oh, was it a bid or was it an RFQ, the difference is?
RFQ. It was a request for.
Oh, it went out to RFQ.
Not a bid.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I can honestly tell you off the top of my head, we would have to research it.
Yes, so, um, all right, and that's fair, and, um, and I would like to send the statute over as well, because I remember, I just can't, I don't have my, um, other computer with me to do the search, um, but I am, uh, it, it, with the Business Administrator, uh, Adam Cruz is available to speak to it, because I'm all, I mean, I am, yeah, go ahead. I know that when a, when, when, something that got to RFP is only a sole bidder, because you can't really, I mean, a sole bidder doesn't really speaks to a fair.
It's not a bid, it's only, it's a.
I mean, I mean, a sole, I'm sorry, you're correct, I'm using the wrong language, the sole, the sole respondent. She said that this organization was the only, and the, only entity that replied. It was, so, um, the, the law states clearly in the contracts law that when that happens, we're obligated to go back out again, uh, to, uh, publish the, um, RFP once again to ensure that it was properly advertised and, 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 um, the level of, the level of interest um, was, uh, was, um, was, uh, uh, captured. So that's what I'm saying, and, uh, I just want to make sure that this contract was fairly advertised, and there aren't interested parties, because it's very concerning when we select a sole bidder, right? So, you know, I don't know whether or not it was adequately, um, uh, uh, advertised. That's why, that's, I believe that's what the intent of the law is, uh, uh, to assure that it was adequately advertised, and it reached, uh, uh, you know, the public, the masses, right? So you got to do it once, and you got to go out twice, just to ensure that all the masses had an opportunity to compete for this government, this very lucrative government contract. So, uh, it's always raises eyebrows when it's just one, one sole bidder, being, I mean, a, a, a sole respondent being, um, selected. So I think it's fair enough to do the due diligence, and I would just move to table this until we can get, uh, some verification from our legal team that, uh, about the New Jersey, uh, contracts law, and what it, um, what the guidance is here on, on, on sole, uh, respondents.
Is that a motion, ma'am?
Yes.
Council President.
I have a motion, I, I, the, the motion to table must be heard, I'm sorry, without interruption. Uh, I have a motion, I have a second by Mister Rodriguez. Uh, this is to receive a legal opinion with regard to the local public contracts law and RFPs and single bidders, is that?
Yes, I mean, a, a single respondent.
Can Mister, can Mister Klowgi get back to us before the next council meeting with his interpretation?
We'll get you the answer within a day or so.
Uh, Mister Blakely?
No.
Ms. Colwellson?
I'm going to abstain.
Mister Harrison?
No.
Mister Michelle?
No.
Uh, Mister Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Motion table fails three to three with one extension. Council President, would you like me to move forward with the vote?
Yes.
Let's vote on resolution twenty-one dash five sixty-eight, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Oh, I mean, what are we doing now, I'm sorry?
This is actually to approve, ma'am, your motion to table fail.
Oh, oh, um, no.
Council President McBride?
I'm abstaining.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to two with one extension.
Mr. Klose, we still need your legal opinion.
I will certainly do that.
May I continue, Mr. Colin?
And this is, next we have resolution twenty-one dash five sixty-nine. This is resolution, amending resolution number twenty-one dash zero one four, authorizing the execution of a grant dance agreement in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars within city Trenton, the community loan fund of New Jersey Inc. Doing business as New Jersey Community Capital Correct. So, a motion?
So move.
So move.
I motion by Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely. Now call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Um, apologies, but which one are we on?
This is resolution twenty-one dash five sixty-nine, ma'am.
Right on the screen, Robin.
Oh. Um, no.
Council President McBride?
That's the one that they're making the correction on?
Yeah, on the count number, ma'am.
Yes. Yes, mhm.
Yes, ma'am. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five seventy. Resolution authorized change.
I believe Council President tabled that.
Which one?
Five seventy?
Did you want this tabled, Council President? Let me take a look at my notes.
Yes.
Uh, she wanted a legal opinion from Mr. Klose with regard to the change order procedure for, I believe this is because it's in excess of twenty percent, uh, threshold.
Right, and.
For the change, but, which, I'm sorry, which resolution?
This is resolution twenty-one dash five seventy.
Yes, and, and that we definitely know, Mr. Klose, that the, um, the change order cannot exceed the actual bid, yes. And so that's why I said that this should be tabled until this is addressed.
I'll be happy to take a look at it and get back to you with an opinion.
I have motioned to table resolution twenty-one dash five seventy by Council President McBride, until the legal opinion is received, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Paula Wilson. Uh, call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Motion table carries by vote of five to two. This is tabled until Mr. Klose provides his legal opinion to council, which should be by next week. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five seventy-one. This is resolution authorizing to rescinding cancel the contract for resolution number twenty dash two eighty-three, awarded to Golden Building Maintenance, do I have a motion?
So, ma'am.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blakely? Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution carries by vote of seven to zero. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five seventy-two. This is resolution awarding contract to a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen colon forty-four cap A, there's twenty point four, that's second, awarded to French and Parello Associates for professional landscape architectural engineering, design development, construction, document preparation, construction administration, and oversight for Martin Luther King Junior pool improvements for a period of one year from date of award and an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars to RFP twenty twenty-one dash forty-three. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrison? Call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Uh, abstain.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of five to one with one extension. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash four fifty-two. Almost there. This is resolution twenty-one dash four fifty-two, a resolution accepting a bid in awarding contract to fully incorporate it for generator inspection and maintenance testing and emergency services for an emergency backup service diesel generator at the water filtration plant for a period of one year from September seventeen, twenty twenty-one, to September sixteen, twenty twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents.
So, ma'am.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, do I have a, I have a second by Mr. Harrison? Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Second, you got to get the right resolution, huh? Mr. Blakely, your vote was yes, correct?
It was yes, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by vote of six to one. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash four eighty-seven, and I thought, uh, I didn't know if council wanted to, uh, table this.
It's our, it's already, isn't it, isn't it still tabled, Mr. Uh, Mr. Colin, until we do some action on it?
No, it was actually tabled until Mr. O'Brien made his presentation. Mr. O'Brien has made his presentation, so it's untabled, if you'd like to table it for a different purpose to, uh,
Yeah, I, I, I would like to table it until, um, we are able to go back to Mr. O'Brien and negotiate the, the, the price tag and the, um, the, the timeline.
I have a motion by Council President McBride to table, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Blakely, I'll call the roll. Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Michelle?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
Um, uh, wait, one, one second, my computer just, um, here's mine, wait one second. Uh, my, my Windows, my Windows froze, oh my goodness, okay, um, sorry, uh, it's on a screen right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, this is the, um, the audit, and, um, Councilman Rodriguez wants to get a timeline.
Yeah, 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 of course, of course, of course, yes, 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 um, so we're voting to, we're going to table this, right?
This is a vote to table.
Yes, 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 my vote is yes, my vote is yes.
And I think I may skip Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution is tabled. Next we have resolution twenty-one dash five seventy-seven, and I will get to the consent agenda after we're done with all the other resolutions, counsel. Uh, this is resolution twenty-one dash five seventy-seven, a resolution authorizing a three-year license agreement with OW Investors LLC DBA Mars Company to continue to provide equipment, hardware, and software maintenance for the water meter test bank system within the city Trenton for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand three hundred and forty dollars per year through bid twenty nineteen dash zero three.
So move.
I motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, I have a second by Mr. Harrison. Council President, would you like me to proceed to the roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, no vote.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution carries by a vote of four to one, with, of, start four to two with one new vote. Uh, counsel, that is actually it for the roll call, I'm gonna actually call for the consent agenda, do I have a motion to move the consent agenda?
Oh, move.
So move.
I have a motion by Mr. Blakely, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Paula Wilson, I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Consent agenda is carried. Next, we have ordinances, Council President, would you like me to proceed for the introduction of the ordinances?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am. First, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-one. This is an ordinance revising and amending chapter two administration article twelve, fire department section two fifty-nine establishment, fire department section two dash sixty, authority of the fire director in section two dash sixty-one responsibilities of the fire department, and adding section two dash sixty-two authority of the deputy chief to the Trenton City Code relating to the city Trenton Fire Department. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Paula Wilson, do I have a second?
Second, second.
I have a second by Mr. Harris. Now call the roll, Mr. Blakely?
Yes.
Ms. Paula Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Mr. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution or the, uh, the introduction carries six to zero. Public hearing is set for January twentieth. January twentieth. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two. This is an ordinance amending section two dash twenty-nine redevelopment functions in section two dash one, city council of the city of Trenton Code. Do I have a motion?
Point of information. Point of information?
Uh, maybe if I could just get the motion, uh, the introduction, uh, this is Council President McBride. Council President, did you want to introduce this?
Yes, I said, so move, mhm.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Douglas? You're gonna have to mute yourself, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Paula Wilson, uh, Mr. Blakely, you wanted to point out information, Council President?
Yeah, so, uh, could you bring the resolution up on the screen, please, or the ordinance on the screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm concerned, uh, that this has not been signed, uh, by the city attorney. Uh, can I have, uh, the city attorney or representative from the attorney's office outline why this has not been signed?
There's actually an inherent conflict, because this is the product of a lawsuit between the council and the mayor.
The council, special council. Mr. Clerk, I'm not talking to you, I'm asking.
It would be improper.
Sir, 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 I'm not asking you, I'm asking a question to the law department. So, I don't need you to interject in any way regarding me fulfilling my duties as an elected official, so stay in your lane. Okay, can I have someone from the law department, uh, answer my question as I initially asked?
Council President, would you like me to, may I respond?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Council. Councilman Blakely, um, I, you know, I really wish I had a better answer for you, um, uh, you know, I can only say that, uh, in normal, in the course of things, the law department would review and approve as to form and legality. Um, I presume that if it wasn't signed by, you know, uh, an assistant, uh, city attorney or the law director himself, um, that, you know, maybe there is, may be a co, a conflict of interest, or there may be some sort of, uh, legal opposition to the ordinance itself, and maybe that's why it was not signed. Um, the law director did not discuss this particular ordinance with me, so I, I really, I, I'm speculating a bit as to why it wasn't signed, um, you know, just based on, you know, what I, you know, my, my, my past experience as to, you know, why, how, and when, uh, the law department should, uh, sign. Not sign, it's either one of the reasons, maybe there is a conflict, and so the law, law department did not sign, or there's some opposition as to maybe the content of the ordinance, um, um, or, or, or act that is being taken in the ordinance. Um, so I, I really apologize that I can't provide a more solid answer, uh, if you would like, I can discuss this further and research it further and provide you with, um, you know, more of a definitive response at a later time.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, you know, this whole grandstanding with the law director and he not signing ordinance and resolutions for form and legality, inferring that there's something wrong or illegal about the, the pieces of legislation. And I would like Mr. Klose to chime in as soon as I'm finished with my remarks. Um, at the end of the day, we've been told time and time again that the law, even, uh, it just came up in the Jacobson court hearing. The law director signs off for form and legality. It has no bearing on, um, uh, uh, the, the validity of the ordinance. Um, so, Mr. Klose, being the law, uh, our council, can you explain the purpose and, uh, 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 the law director's signature? Or review, in review?
There is no statute that requires the law director to sign off on the former validity of an ordinance. The city has in fact, however, adopted a local ordinance as part of its rules to, uh, advance that requirement. I've discussed this matter going back with Mr. Morelli, and we both agreed that the lack of a signature as to form or legality would not invalidate the ordinance, because theoretically, a rogue law director could never sign off on any ordinance if he didn't want to, and council would never be able to move anything. So, we interpreted it as an internal control that the city adopted, but that the lack of it would not interfere with the legality of an ordinance being advanced or adopted. It's obviously not a desirable way to go. Um, this, my understanding is that this ordinance was drafted by Mr. Hoffman?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and I never saw anything in writing as to why, you know, there were any objections to it as to form and legality, so I really, I can't speak to what the problem may be, uh, I can't speak to what the problem may be, uh, you know, was it, was it just not signed for, you know, an inadvertent reason, I don't know.
And that's another thing that I wanted to comment on, so, when the law director, now I remember when our previous law director was at the helm, if he did not, uh, if he didn't opt to sign off on any piece of legislation put forward by the council for form and legality, he would put forward a written opinion as to why he's not signing it. So, I think this is nothing but grandstanding, um, by, uh, the councilman and the law director. Uh, 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 so, it is what it is. The, the, the sign, the signature of the law director on these, uh, ordinance and resolutions are just, um, I would say, uh, somewhat, I don't know, symbolic, I don't know. Um, but as far as the, the, the individual who wrote the, uh, ordinance, uh, John Hoffman, John Hoffman is a partner of the Willins Law Firm, he is on the retained, the, the Willins Law Firm is on the retained list, and the retained list is, uh, vetted by whom? The law director, Wes Bridges. So, Wes Bridges has issues with, uh, Mr. Hoffman and, and, and the legality of an ordinance, then Wes Bridges, uh, should, should do a better job vetting attorneys that he hires for the city of Trenton. So, we, we, this is just, um, uh, this grandstanding and trying to, um, uh, 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 set a narrative that this ordinance is somehow illegal, and it's not. It, it's put forward by a reputable, uh, attorney, uh, in his, in, in the space of redevelopment, and he has been retained by the law director to represent council on redevelopment issues. So, uh, let's move on, thank you, Mr. Kalogi, and thank you, uh, Council President.
Council President, would you like me to move the roll?
Yes, please.
This is for the, uh, vote on order, the introduction, ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-two, Mr. Blakely.
No.
Miss Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
No.
Mr. Michelle.
No.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
The ordinance carries, the public hearing will be on January twentieth. Introduction passes. Next, we have ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-three. This is the county year ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits to establish catback, do I have a motion?
So move.
I motion with Mr. Harrison, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second with Mr. Blakely. And I'll call the roll, Mr. Blakely.
Yes.
Miss Colwell Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Michelle.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
No.
Ms. Vaughn.
No.
Council President McBride.
No.
The ordinance passes, public hearing will be on January twentieth. Council President, that is the docket for this evening, uh, next would be civic comment, did you want to, I'm sorry, public comment, did you want to, uh, open the floor to the public comment?
Yes.
The telephone, you can dial star six to, I'm sorry, star nine to raise your hand. If you are on a landline, uh, I'm sorry, if you're on a landline, use star nine, if you're on a smartphone, look for the little ellipses that has a little menu, and you can raise your hand using that, Council President, first we have Ms. Caitlin Fair.
Go right ahead, Ms. Fair.
Good evening, everyone, um, first and foremost, I wanted to publicly acknowledge that in the last, uh, council meeting, I did make an error in a statement that I made, and I wanted to express gratitude to Sam Prizzi for his prompt correction of that misinformation, and subsequently for his generous and helpful support in working with me to identify both where the error came from and what the accurate information actually is. Um, and in that process, I was able to, um, which has a helpful page, that has the breakdown of various tax rates that are, are in our property taxes for every year dating back to two thousand and three, actually. Um, initially, I had misread the line items, which was what led to my error, um, but in looking at the tax rate tables, again, for the last two years, uh, we were able to identify that the increase in taxes was in the school tax rate, which increased from one point zero four two in twenty twenty to one point one two eight in twenty twenty-one. Uh, that being said, the school tax rate is assessed based on your lot value, and with the taxable assessed value of that being a hundred percent. And not only did the school tax rate increase, but also if your property was recently reassessed and the value of your property increased, which we know is the case for many properties in the city recently, this would result in seeing an even larger increase in your taxes. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and also say that I think it's really helpful to know that this information exists and where to find it, so that individuals can be empowered to access this information and utilize the tools that are available to us in order to most effectively and efficiently advocate for ourselves and engage in the civic process. Um, and I hope that we can get to a place where we're supporting one another in this way, in the way that Sam did with me, um, including sharing resources and collectively problem solving in order to continue to move our city forward, which I think is the ultimate goal for everyone. Um, as Sam said in our conversation, if the city fails, we all fail. This is about figuring out how to win together, which I really believe is the essence of this work. Um, and to that point, I also want to mention that with that in mind, we should also keep in mind that the more ratables we have in the city, the less of a tax burden we have. Um, fewer ratables means fewer people responsible for the tax burden, which means more tax burden on each individual taxpayer. So if we increase ratables, more people are paying taxes and the burden is more spread out, which helps to take the pressure off of the collective community. Um, so I think that we should be taking advantage of as many legitimate opportunities to rehabilitate vacant and abandoned homes and return them to the tax rolls, as well as to demolish properties that are not rehabable, to enhance the quality of life for the residents who are living around them, so those families can remain in their homes, and to also make way for new ratables in place of those particular dilapidated and dangerous structures that end up costing the city money and present a threat to existing residents. So to that end, I really, really, really want to thank council very sincerely for passing the addition of a Hundred Heart Avenue to the demo package this evening. Um, this is a win for the folks who are currently living on Heart Avenue, and those who will be purchasing property on Heart Avenue in the very near future, as well as for the rest of the East Trenton community. Um, lastly, I just wanted to comment on ordinance twenty-one thirty-two. Um, I will be the first to admit that I am not certain at all that I fully understand the practical implications of this resolution, but I'm not without concern about it. Um, I would like to point out that just because something might be legal doesn't mean it's a good idea or in the best interest of the city, but in any case, here in city council, there is frequent talk about the need for transparency, which I absolutely agree with. So I'm hoping that members of council or their legal council can explain in the coming meetings in layman's terms for the public what the actual practical changes to the current redevelopment practices and procedures would be, would be that this ordinance would bring with it. Um, there's also been a lot of mention about the need for this ordinance based on what some assert as a lack of redevelopment plan by the administration. Um, so I would assume that based on this, council has a clear and comprehensive economic development and redevelopment plan that they intend to implement, should this ordinance be approved. So, I would like for council to clearly lay out what its plan is that would justify making this change, as well as let the public know who its designees, which is mentioned be, and what the added cost to the city, if any, of utilizing said designees in lieu of our existing HED staff would be. Um, I also wanted to acknowledge that, to my knowledge, the city is in the process of updating the land development ordinance and having public hearings and collecting feedback on it. I've seen this presentation several times and reviewed the proposed updates on the website, which is very informative and comprehensive. Um, and in the terms of redevelopment, my understanding is that this process has to be completed in full before any of the existing though significantly outdated redevelopment plans can be updated, because it will potentially change the allowed land use and permitances of various different parts of the city. So that being said, I don't know that it's entirely accurate to say that the city doesn't have a plan and isn't doing anything, because I know and have seen that they have been consistently and actively working on the LDO process, which will inform the redevelopment plan updates once that process is complete. Um, there are parts of that proposal that I'm not at all in favor of, and I think are a terrible idea, and I have serious concerns about, and there are also parts of it that I think sound great. Um, but what I made sure that I did was to go on the website and submit my feedback so that it can be taken into consideration before anything is finalized as far as the land development ordinance is concerned. Um, and perhaps it's naive of me to think that my opinion will make any difference, but I think that it is our responsibility as residents and constituents and taxpayers to engage with the channels that are provided to us before we can complain that they don't work. And I best believe that, if, should they end up constructing a high-rise next to my house and taking up all of our parking, I will absolutely be wherever I need to be, making this think about it, because I did, I did my due diligence and gave my feedback, and, you know, I will let somebody know if I feel like that didn't make a difference. Um, so that said, I encourage everyone to go take a look at that full proposal on the website and to submit your feedback as well. They've extended the deadline for feedback twice now to try and ensure that they're capturing as much public feedback as possible, and the current deadline for that feedback is January thirty-first. Um, the website to access the plan in full is trentontwo fiftyldoupdate.com, and there's also a Spanish language presentation of the proposal coming up next Wednesday, January twelfth, for residents who might want to attend and be walked through the different parts of it by the city planners. Um, I'm also happy to look at it with anyone who wants to and to help to whatever extent I can in terms of understanding it. Um, and I thank you for your time, and I hope everyone has a wonderful night.
Mr. Collins?
Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else wish to be addressed by the Trenton City, or wish to address the Trenton City Council this evening? Council President, Ms. Sherri Garrett.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you, uh, Council President McBride and, um, the council body. Um, hmm. I had emailed, um, Andre Daniels, the director of, um, in regards to the land development ordinance, um, and I spoke with him in face-to-face after, I think I sent a couple of emails, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet. So, um, thank you, I don't recall the young lady's name, who just, oh, I will go to trentontwo fiftyupdate.com and, uh, look at it, but, um, I asked to be on that committee, and I haven't heard a word from him. Um, and in regards to the tax rate, yes, uh, I'm glad you did do your due diligence, because as it was stated yesterday, that the school taxes are increasing, and we're getting ready, or the board, the, 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 the parent population said they did not want any of those new schools open because of the tax increase in taxes. And, um, we were ignored, and the board decided in December to go ahead with that. Um, ordinance, um, ordinance, you know, this thing with the, uh, the, uh, parking authority, I, 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 I just think it's a lot of nerve for, uh, Councilman, um, Michelle and Councilman Harrison, you know, and I'm, you know, you boohooing about the order, playing politics, but you, you supported twenty-one five sixty-eight? And twenty-one five sixty-eight? And another one, that it was not benefiting anybody for the city of Trenton. Oh, and the twenty-one five sixty-eight, I don't know Isles as, uh, organization to do mental health. So, that would be interesting to see what credentials, what did they do, go out and hire, uh, mental health or behavioralist? Uh, for this contract, because I, I, for years, I've never known Isles to be able to deliver mental health counseling and whatever. I know they had a contract with the, uh, the, uh, Board of Education for, uh, uh, students who had, um, for, uh, con- construction or for built, for, uh, help with understanding how to build, uh, to do building or contract work, and, uh, I don't think that was a very successful, but they got paid pretty good to do it. But, um, I really wanted to end with, uh, twenty-one thirty-one. I, I don't really understand the purpose of this ordinance, because I think we're still playing politics. Um, I really didn't, i- it's really interesting that we're running rings around the fire director, because the fire director, as of Tuesday, still didn't have the amendments, nor did he have, he was able to speak on it. Okay, and, uh, I don't understand why this, this, this twenty-one thirty-one is even being proposed, so it sounds like people are prepositioning themselves, uh, for more firefighters who don't live in the city of Trenton, because, you know, through the grapevine, I was told that there was a few people who were considered, who were relatives of some of the, uh, fire, uh, 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 personnel, that they, and that, and that they weren't even qualified. So, to me, it sounds like they're still jockeying for positions and taking care of their families. And two, as I said, stated, uh, on Tuesday, Trenton Fire, Fire Department and the Police Department, that budget, there's got to be something, either you're gonna have to take the people who, to, who are flat-footed, out of shape, and put them through a, 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 a program, uh, especially the ones who are sitting behind a desk collecting buddy two hundred, two, close to two hundred thousand dollars a year, out there on the streets. Because we're paying a lot of money for a police department, and for what? For what? We're not getting the results. Uh, in regards to twenty-one thirty-two, yes, I think it's a great idea, it's about time that we, uh, establish a redevelopment authority for the city of Trenton. I just hope we're not going to be hiring the same type of people we've been hiring, uh, especially for this administration, and you just hire from a resume because somebody said that on their resume, they did X, Y, and Z, and then you hire them, and then we gotta hire contractors to train them to do their job, give me a break. Twenty-one thirty-three, uh, with, uh, the young, the, she's not a young lady, but she, she retired from the city. When she, before she retired, in regard, in regards to the, the cat bake, the, the, the argument to increase it then was, um, for being able to, uh, prevent such a deficit and prevent layoffs. Now, we're coming back to it again, and I think she just retired two years ago, two years ago, was it? Oh, I, I think in this, it, we were in COVID, I think, so it may not have been two ye- I think about two years ago, and we're back to the same thing again. This administration and council were spending too much money, like it's going out of style. And just like the young lady said, we don't have enough ratables, we don't have enough ratables. What do we, you, we're, these, 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 these bills that you are paying for, and it's just like, oh, whatever, whatever. And then we're never going to get from under the MOU, we got under the MOU because the Palmer administration mismanaged the budget, mismanaged funds. And we're headed back to the same thing, we're not learning from our lessons. And, and that's, that's what's amazing, we're not learning from our lesson. We just keep, continue to do it, and I just don't think we're really, some of you, I just don't think really understand, uh, economics, how money moves. You know, I, I don't think you really understand truly what supply and demand, we're still thinking like we're in the colonial period, you know, certain people to keep them established, and then on the backs of other people. We're still running the city like we're in sixteen-something. Come on now, wake up, we got all this education, but we still, we are still functioning in the past, we're not letting go of the past because we can't see the move forward. And you can tell, because And you can tell because there's no innovation. And you don't need a college degree and a bunch of credentials to come up with innovation. That's how people, we come up with the, 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 the newspaper, the, 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 um, the traffic light. All these vitches, especially for black people who are supposed to be not that educated. We come up with a whole lot because we needed to, to make life a lot better for everybody. Not just for a specific set of people. So I, I just don't, I, I just think it, this is the same old jargon, it's the same old stuff. You, we gotta get out of the past.
Thirty seconds.
Let it go so we can move on into the future, we're collectively together so we all can win. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Council President, uh, I believe Ms. Chowder.
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, um, first of all, I wanted to thank the speakers that spoke before me. Both of them were really, um, informative and knowledgeable. Um, uh, I appreciate the first speaker's, um, no, uh, comments that, um, we need more transparency. Um, and we also need more engagement from public members. And, uh, as I've mentioned before, I think you need more accessible announcements. Most people in Trenton will not go to Trenton site to look up things like, you know, uh, meeting notes and, uh, meeting times. So I think there needs to be a more public facing and accessible, uh, very, very, uh, easy to read and digest, uh, digestible notices that go out, whether that means something in the Trentonian or something, uh, more, uh, I guess more, uh, widespread. Um, I also, um, really appreciate, um, Ms. Garette's remarks and that was a hard, uh, a hard set of comments to follow and she made really excellent points. Um, uh, the mismanagement of the money is a real issue, um, and I wanted to address what Isles is doing. Um, if Isles is, uh, Isles budget is about five to six million dollars. Uh, in five to six million dollars, I don't understand why their gardens are not more notable. Um, they're supposed to have something like 50 gardens and don't quote me on that number, but they have a number of gardens in Trenton. I've never seen, or not often have I seen these gardens to be particularly active, to be functional, to be viable, to be actually adding value to Trenton. Um, with a budget like that, I would imagine that the gardens here would be so good that they would actually attract outsiders. Um, but I don't see any of that. Um, and the idea that you would hand them another million dollars, um, is, is really concerning to me. Uh, although I understand it's other people's, uh, error too and not having, um, and not having, um, bid out. But, um, according to Isles, they revitalize communities by working along local residents to plan neighborhoods' future. They train and educate adults through alternative programs. They build wealth, uh, uh, through innovative financial, financial services. Um, if this is all true, then they should have already been partnering and produced a lot better gardens in our local schools. For instance, we should have an urban gardener program. Um, we should, they should have produced some graduates who would help go back into the community. Um, their staff is largely outside of Trenton. If you look at a list of their staffs and look at, you know, who they are and where they're from. Um, so I, I, I think that Isles, I would like to see Isles come and do a presentation to defend their value. Um, and, um, my other issue is, uh, while Trent policing continues to be my main issue, um, and I can't assume to be able to dismantle brutal police culture in a single phone call or in a meeting. Um, however, I think the problem in our policing lies in, um, basically Nixon era policies, um, which you can read about in a lot of sources, um, through a lot of sources, uh, designed basically to discredit two main groups, um, and that was African Americans and liberals. Um, these policies were designed to associate drug use with these groups, um, and also to associate drug use with, you know, moral decrepitude, um, and use those methods to disenfranchise and politi- particularly politically. Because as you know, if you have any sort of drug charge, you lose your right to vote. So you automatically section out a great number of people. Uh, so it was a very designed and, and, and well executed plan, including language like war on drugs. So, you know, it really is, no one should be surprised at how this turned out. It turned out, I think, how it was planned to turn out, which was to, um, criminalize and disenfranchise, um, certain groups of people. Um, I don't think Trent policing is going to get much better unless it, it absolutely dismantles, um, the, the police culture that's been supported by these policies. Um, and the, you know, unrelenting, um, almost predatory policing of, of people in places like Trenton. And it's been, of course, the inner cities which have suffered most from this war on drugs. I don't have time enough to talk about every aspect of it, but I hope that those that are policymakers are listening to the idea that the antiquated policies must be phased out, accountable, accountability needs to be brought in, oversight needs to be implemented immediately. Um, or you just need to really consider dismantling institution, which is possibly doing more harm than help. Um, um, I would encourage everybody to support Angela McKnight's bill on CCRBs, which are civilian, um, review boards. Um, she has said it much better than I can, um, and you can look at her, uh, her, her outreaches about this. Um, she basically says that after watching horrific displays of unchecked behavior by police officers, um, I knew what I, I had to do whatever I could. The civilian review boards, uh, call for, uh, civilian oversight. Uh, they also call for, uh, Sabina powers. Um, and they call for disciplinary actions to be measured by the civilians who pay the, who hire and pay the police, not by an internal mechanism, which has already been found to be deeply corrupt, um, and kind of like really unsustainable from the start. Um, so we need to continue to foster transparency, awareness and, uh, equality in policing practices here in Trenton. Um, the other issues, I don't know how much time I have left, but the other issues I wanted to, uh, mention um, is, um, I agree with Ms. Garette, you can't get a response from a lot of these departments that are paid. Um, the Department of Streets, I've been contacting them for the past six, seven months, asking them to put some, um, cans on our street. We just need those cheap cans, the silver ones, the gray ones. Um, I can't get a call back, I've left over 10 messages, I've sent emails, I've sent emails with pictures. Um, on Greenwood, we are in the middle of Chambers and Olden. These are major thoroughfares. There is no reason that those intersections can't have a simple can that people can throw litter in. You know, and at the same time, you're ready to give Isles a million dollars to develop a street cleaning team. How about you just like put some cans out there, it's really not that serious, it's not that hard. Um, but I can't get a call back and I can't get an email back. So hopefully, um, I believe members from that department are on this phone call. Um, I'd really like to, to respond and put some cans out there. Add to that the fact that this is in front of a school. You know, I, I would think that Trenton would be invested in making that area kind of neat. Um, but they don't seem to care, but they're willing to, to contract out money to outsiders without looking internally for solutions. Um, in addition to this, that street has no 25 mile per hour sign in front of the school. This is really shocking to me, I've never been passed a school. I've been in schools in rural areas which will have signs when they have virtually no traffic. And there is no sign that says 25 miles per hour. Um, I contacted, uh, someone in Trenton about this and my understanding is Greenwood is designated as a truck route. So I guess someone lobbied for that. But the idea that a truck route would be in front of a school that serves that many thousands of students, it, it just doesn't make sense. It's irresponsible and dangerous. Um, my understanding is there's already been a couple of accidents on Chambers Street. So I don't understand why, why Trenton would participate in something and, and the messaging behind it is concerning. That, that you're not concerned enough about these, these students are, are, are 18 normally or maybe 19 and under. They can't be crossing streets without, without proper like speeding regulations, you know? And it's very disturbing to me and, um, and evidently I guess the truckers beat the students as far as being important, which is, which is a sad comment, um, about, uh, priorities. Um, I think that the contracts that were discussed tonight can continue to be part of the constant bleed, um, that's happening in Trenton. There were more change orders, there were more increases. And I want to know how many people were hired within Trenton? How many real jobs were created in Trenton? It doesn't take training to be part of a, you know, cleaning crew. You know, there, there, there's no, if you're, if you're giving somebody $83,000 as a change order, then I would, I would literally assume that you could spend three or four thousand of that by hire and, and hire people from within Trenton, but I still think that there's loose regulations for that. And so the tax dollars continue to move out, they constantly move out. So you're, you're creating an economically unviable, unsustainable situation. You know, which will continue until you get some accountability. And I thank the council members who continue with their rigor and accountability. Um, oh, and I, uh, and I want to know why there, uh, has anybody explored the idea of putting solar panels on top of the, uh, high school? You've got a lot of square footage and I don't understand why there's not solar panels. If, if Trenton is, is, is planning to make changes and, and try to change as a city, you should be embracing green energy. Um, I don't think Isles has any solar panels. I don't think Isles has any solar panels at their gardens. So, so this money's not being spent well, in my opinion. You know, you, you've got, you've got major square footage on various buildings, large, large number of buildings owned by the city. Why hasn't an initiative been started? Solar panels are much more reasonable than they used to be. So this is, this is economically feasible, but I think, I think the question is that the interests are not there. The interests are really not aligned. They have, there's a lot of people with some very diff- different goals. Okay, thank you, sorry about going over my time, thank you.
Council President, Mr. Algenon Ward.
Go right ahead, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, um, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, good evening, uh, council. Um, thank you, uh, for allowing me, uh, an opportunity to speak. Um, I'd like to first say, I'd like to associate myself with many of the remarks Ms. Fair made earlier, um, regarding the need for ratables and the process we need to undergo in order to try to assure, assure that process. As a residence, residents has always been interested in, uh, how my city develops, my hometown. Um, I've tried to engage in those processes that are in place right now. And, um, the 250 plan is one of those areas. And I'll be first to say that I'm not happy with, um, the state of affairs as far as development goes. But at the same time, I'll also say that everyone can agree that we need more ratables. And we also need to clear, um, land so that those ratables can be developed. So to smooth that process, I hope that the city council considers, you know, when these demolition projects, um, are going forward, that they, we, we don't, um, become an impediment themselves. Um, of course, I'm interested in a project on Hard Avenue, but this is a process that should happen all over the city of Trenton in the areas that need to be redeveloped. So that we, uh, and that, and that process should be done correctly. I'm not advocating for, um, any amount of feasance, but it also should be done efficiently. And, um, city council should consider if the process that they're requiring, um, the demolition to go through isn't itself, uh, encumbering the process by extending it out and making it cost more. So that the council also has a role in, in trying to save, uh, the city money by doing things in the most efficient and proper manner. And as, as an aside, um, uh, my vision for the city, as one who was born here, is that we not rebuild the ghetto, that we not, um, jam as many, uh, low, uh, low income housing as we can in his small, uh, footprint because we in fact degrade the quality of life, uh, for everyone, including the, even the new residents and the old residents. So that, um, that development has to be, uh, done in a considered fashion. And the public input has to be at the top of the list, uh, as the residents who live here, uh, have their input actually have an impact on the overall development plan. Um, but there's very long conversations to have on that topic as well as the one that, that the previous speaker, uh, uh, addressed. I'm a long veteran advocate for civilian review boards. Um, we were assured that, that the council would, uh, help move that process along, but there's been very little, um, actual progress done on that front. And it's something, it's just a, uh, time arm waiting to explode because police culture has not changed. Right now, uh, we've made some improvements, but they're not of the scope that, uh, to face the problem that we face here in the city of Trenton. Um, and that has to do with public safety, uh, the, our murder rate and everything else. Um, because we haven't adapted the color, it's simply waiting us out. They go to the go away, but the problem was not because we never, uh, fixed it at its root. And it has everything to do with the way policing happens, uh, in, in minority neighborhoods like Trenton. Um, but again, these are all very, um, extended topics. And, uh, two of the speaker, to pe- to the people who spoke before me, um, touched on the subject, so I won't regurgitate all of it. But on the practical sense, um, I'm down the street from Junior One. The first junior high school building, uh, in the United States is a block away from me. It's a, a, a worthy building that we would love to see become a community center. And right now is standing open and being vandalized and torn down because whoever is the property owner, the city, uh, the housing authority or the, uh, uh, or the school district has simply not secured the building. They simply have not put up, uh, uh, barriers, uh, for, to prevent vandalism. They're going to tear the, the building, uh, will be destroyed if somebody doesn't take the practical step of securing the building. And I would ask, um, Councilwoman, um, Caldwell Wilson to look into this please and see that, uh, Junior One is closed up. It's, it's becoming, um, uh, a real, uh, problem for the neighborhood. And whatever organs in the city has to be brought to bear on this problem. I'd ask that they would, uh, at least secure the building. We're about to face a snow emergency, people are going to be having to park our cars over there. Uh, with this building wide open, all kind of depravity goes on. So I would ask the city to take the practical step, you know, even now to secure the building. This is not a major construction project, it's just simply bored a building up and secure it so it's not degraded any further. Um, we'd, I really would like your help in this neighborhood with this issue. Um, so please address it. And, uh, it's crazy not to have a 25 mile per hour, um, sign in the city. And, uh, the woman was quite right when she said that obviously means that the trucks are worth more than the children. Uh, so that's unconscionable to have, uh, um, to not have the trucks slow, slow down by a school. That's, that makes no rational sense to me. Um, but, uh, and I don't want to, uh, use up all of my time, um, uh, belaboring points that other people have already made. Um, we'd like to, uh, uh, ask city council to be, um, diligent in, uh, everyone else to see unsafe demolished buildings taken down in the city of Trenton. But I'm also, also like to point out that Trenton has certain, um, like Junior One, for instance, a historic building that should be preserved. So we shouldn't rush to do it, we should do it in a considered fashion. And, uh, you can do that in an intelligent way, you can do both. It's not, they're not mutually exclusive. In fact, uh, um, uh, getting rid of your historic gems in a rush to redevelopment is actually, um, a, a unwise way to approach redevelopment. Uh, and, and lastly, I would say about solar panels on Trent High. In fact, um, I advocated strongly for those solar panels because they would have, um, benefited the taxpayers in the city of Trenton by supplying power to the high school. Um, and you asked to can lease the space to a private company that would pay utility bills for the high school. And I advocated strongly from, from that position when I was on the school board. But, um, uh, then, and that whole debate included, uh, a green school. Um, but the roof design, the final roof design that was chosen, uh, made that difficult to impossible to do. Um, it may not be totally foreclosed upon, but it curtailed, so it didn't make much economic sense because of, just because of the roof design, which, and all we had to do is choose a more intelligent and a more green design. And that issue would have been, I actually had a school that would have, um, saved us an enormous amount of money in heating it and actually, um, bring, uh, income from leasing out the space. So, um, I think what's lacking here is people with a long range vision, that people think in short term, um, expeditencies and not think in the long term of what happened to the quality of life of the people who live here. And as a person who was born and raised here, you know, I'm always disappointed by that. And we expect, um, the people who operate and legislate in our city to, um, be a bit more sympathetic to the, uh, desire and the vision of the people who live here. Thank you for, uh, your indulgence.
Next, Mr. Collins?
Yes, Council President Evangeline, is Ms. Yegori, is that you?
Yes, yes.
Council President Evangeline Yegori.
Go right ahead, Ms. Yegori.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And so, uh, continuing right on the heels of Mr. Ward's, uh, uh, last words about the vision of the people. I just want to say that all my other fellow residents have spoken. What I personally have to say is thank you, thank you, thank you for those of you who are diligently working for the people. They say politics makes for very strange bedmates. And we have seen that for too long. They say politics makes for very strange bedmates, and we have seen that for too long. Uh, to Mr. Ward's point, that's why Trenton is the way it is. But I want to caution and let everybody know that this particular council has been very instrumental in educating and waking up the people. Wake up, Trenton! And they are waking up because they are being educated about the process. And so to everybody, whether you're working on behalf of the common good or working on your ulterior motive grandstanding behind, thank you for the civic lessons. We are looking, we are learning. They say you live and you learn. You know who you are, the puppet, the detractors, and those who are working really for the people to try to forge a new way ahead forward. We cannot change unless the populace wakes up. And they cannot wake up unless they are fully understanding of the issues, um, at play here. There's been a lot of jockeying for crooked politics, dishonest politics in the city of Trenton, and that's why things are not working here. But I keep saying every time that I get an opportunity to speak because it doesn't serve any purpose to regurgitate or repeat what others have said, I keep saying, as more people are engaged, as more people are listening, learning, and praying, whether you believe in the powers of prayers or not, prayers are working. All of you who are engaging the crooked, uh, dishonest politics, you will leave this town whether you like it or not. You will get out of this town and stop, uh, regressing Trenton. Trenton will regain its old glory. There are the news items out there, out and about, not just in Trenton, the whole continental USA, they're saying Trenton is no longer making and the world is no longer taking because of crooked politics, because of dishonest politics, because of business as usual. You know, they say pride goes before a fall. And for those who have been getting away with stuff for too long, there is even arrogance. I'm talking arrogant pride in continuing the business as usual. Prayers do work, people. Prayers do work. There's more coming, okay? More Pandora's boxes coming, flipping open, and you will leave Trenton. The spirits of those far too long disenfranchised in this city are agitating. Whether we are alive or dead, we are agitating for change, and that change will come. There is only so much you can oppress and people and press and push their back against the wall, against the wall with bad governance. You know, it really takes a big person to say, I am sorry, I erred in the past, or I maybe I didn't serve you too well. You know, apologizing and redoing things, rethinking, that's where it's at. And that's what we want in Trenton. Not a bunch of, you know, and those of us who are learning, that there are those who are educated and what I would call educated illiterates. And there are the stark illiterates who are not educated at all, who think that the business as usual will sustain them. No, it's not going to sustain you. Whether you like it or not, this city will undergo a change for the better. Thank you to those of you who are diligently working. I'm not accusing anybody. I'm not saying anybody is, uh, um, uh, how did you say, responsible for all the ills so now. But if you're going to come on board, you have to make a vow to do differently moving All those politicking, I just wanna put it out there that I hope all these shenanigans, crooked politics, dirty politics, you people, these are, this is not a ruse for you guys to try to dis- disenfranchise us during this coming elections by, uh, painting the city clerk's office as not capable of handling the election process forthcoming. So please, get your act in order, stop obfuscating. We are not deceived, we are not distracted. This city hall will function as it's supposed to function. The clerk's office will function as it is supposed to function. I will rest my peace for now and keep praying. My name is Evangeline, after all. Research that. Thank you kindly.
Ladies and gentlemen, does anyone else wish to be heard by the Trenton City, wish to be heard, uh, before the Trenton City Council this evening? Council President, I would like to be heard.
Go right ahead, Mr. Conlon. That is your right.
Yes, ma'am. This will be transcribed into the record. These statements do not reflect the city of Trenton. These are my personal statements under my First Amendment of Fair to speech. Couple days ago, a report was generated by a law firm named Malley Givens. That report was given to Mr. Wesley Bridges, who then distributed to the Trenton City Council. Shortly after that, it was printed in the Trentonian. They had a copy of that report. The production of personnel documents to newspapers by the city of Trenton is endangering not only its employees, but their families and their friends. In the past, my personnel documents were published to the Trentonian, who then published the names, addresses, and telephone numbers of my friends and family. How in good conscience any one of these people who had this report could possibly publish it to a newspaper? It's unconscionable. You are continuing to put myself and my family in danger. I am asking this council to order an investigation into who released this report. My attorney has likewise given a letter to this council asking for an investigation into who released this report. The release of my personnel documents continues unabated as a punishment to me for doing my job, and it is unconscionable. You are placing others in danger, and whoever did it should be ashamed of themselves. I would like to speak to this report as well. Malley Givens contacted me and asked me to provide an interview, and I asked them to interview me in the presence of my attorney in his office. They also informed me that they were contacting me to take information from me regarding complaints about releases of my personnel documents and other things that have happened in the city of Trenton. They never interviewed me. They never took any evidence from me. And once they found out that I had not only audiotapes and text messages and other evidence, they refused to speak to us at all. Yet somehow they generated a sham report that is a hatchet job, apparently. I don't know. I have not yet seen it, nor has my attorney. Yet the Trentonian actually has a copy of it. That is shameful that your personnel process and procedure works in this way. It is shameful that you continue to use a newspaper to punish any employee with whom you are unhappy, and a lot of this is done by the administration. I am asking that this stop for the protection of the Trenton City employees and their families whom you are placing in danger. I would also like to ask how Malley Givens blew through a stop sign, did not even interview me, told me they were, were investigating a claim that I had made, and never investigated that, never took any evidence, and generate a report at the speed of light, yet for over a year, they have been working on a open and shut issue with the Trenton Parking Authority, and were directed by the City Council to complete that within six months, which they still have not done. And yet they have the time to generate a hatchet job on me. I find that highly suspicious. And once again, ladies and gentlemen of the city of Trenton, neither I nor my attorney were allowed to participate in that process. We were not interviewed, and whatever report you have received is absolutely false. I have direct evidence to refute the claims that were printed in the Trentonian, and I already have a lawsuit against them. These people are proceeding unabated in contravention to the law, and I have asked the New Jersey Department of Criminal Justice to investigate this specific release, as I already anticipated that it would be made before the report was generated. I am asking, please, for the safety of the employees and their families, in light of the issues surrounding the promulgation and adoption of things like Daniel's Law, please stop releasing the personnel information of employees of the city of Trenton and putting their family and friends in danger. I am asking you, I am begging you, please. Thank you.
I'm motion to adjourn public comment.
I'm motion to adjourn, Public Board. Did you adjourn? Second?
Second.
And second, Ms. Caldwell Wilson, all in favor of adjournment in public portion. Couple more, please.
Aye. Councilwoman Vaughn, you can't be heard. You're on mute.
I see her, though. That's good enough.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Seeing none opposed, public portion is closed. Council President, sift comment. Thank you.
I have a couple of things that I want to, uh, mention. Um, you know, we had this crisis, this emergency meeting, and I've received a lot of calls, um, from union officials begging us and asking us, saying, pleading that they wouldn't get paid if we didn't have that special meeting. Well, I wanna ask, no one's told me, but I believe everybody got paid today. And that's because our regularly scheduled meeting, we had planned to take care of that. So the mayor's executive order didn't mean anything that comes to take care of that. So, but I didn't get any calls from anybody telling me that they got their paycheck. As far as Economic Development Authority is concerned, I just want to, um, reach out to all those candidates out there. And, and I would like to say, how many of you are experts in economic development? Right now, our council, we don't have that expertise. I'm not sure that the administration has that expertise. And that's the reason why we want to form an Economic Development Authority with the qualified people, certified people in economic development that can actually work with the city and with council and with all the other moving parts in the city. Capital City redevelopment, Trent Downers Town Association, all of these organizations that are involved in economic development. That's what, that's what the Economic Development Authority would do. This is not a power play from council. Council actually is, right now, the Economic Development Authority, not the city. So it's a power play by the city to stop us from moving forward on this level. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Har- Harrison?
Uh, I would like to talk about, uh, Trenton United Family Foundation. Um, they have a pop-up store. It's called pop-up dot doublegood.com. Uh, starts today noon, uh, ends on Monday at noon. Um, they're looking, uh, for help from the community. Uh, also on Saturday, uh, Clara's Heart, they're doing their, uh, co-drive giveaway on Saturday at the, uh, Trenton Rescue Mission, uh, 10 a.m. till noon. Um, if you like information, you can call Brian, 609-222-2720, Nina, 609-954-6776, or Yasmin, 609-837-7799. Uh, they're donating, uh, unwanted coats, hats, socks, gloves, and blankets to help others. Um, also, uh, the Trenton United Foundation, um, it presents, uh, tough toys and clothes giveaway in collaboration with, uh, God Foundation and, uh, Brown Girls Vision at, uh, St. Michael's Episcopal Church, 140 North Warren, uh, on, uh, Saturday noon to 2 p.m. If for more information or donations, please contact Tough Foundation at 609-516-8590. Um, like you said, tonight, uh, we already have done a forensic audit. There was never anything found with Mr. O'Brien, but now we're considering doing another forensic audit. Uh, we got elected on this council to move the city forward, to work with economic development. Third year, we don't do that. So now we have people who are gonna run for mayor. So yes, it's a political scheme. Everybody can see that. That's what's going on here. But at the end of the day, the people that get hurt are the people that on this council, seven of them supported cannabis. Cannabis has been taken off the docket. The rolling too should be on the docket to move forward. That's been pulled off. So at the end of the day, the people that are getting hurt are the public, the public. As you talk about ratables, you're right, the vacant buildings are not gonna get taken care of because there's members on this council that believe that they're gonna be the next mayor, but that won't happen. Because at the end of the day, you've never even seen them during a pandemic, and you're still never gonna see them out there helping the community. They just talk the talk, but they don't ever walk the walk. Just remember, um, oh, actually on, um, uh, well, that's another thing is, we have certain council members, which blows my mind, as a council person, you're supposed to represent all the communities, right? You're not supposed to stand there and say you represent just the black and the brown community. You're supposed to represent all the communities. That's a problem. We should be representing and helping every individual in this city that needs our help. We shouldn't stand there talking about how we only represent certain people because that's racist. I think some of my colleagues don't seem to get it with their head. But then again, at the end of the day, some of my colleagues already said that they're gonna be moving next year. It's, it's a good thing because the city's not gonna miss people that, that look at people's skin color and have racism in their heart and hatred in the heart. Thank you very much. And so, uh, be safe, everybody. The snowstorm's coming, and, uh, at the end of the day, please come out to these organizations. They do a lot of great for the community, um, and, uh, do our part. Thank you very much.
Councilman, um, you shall?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Um, Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, all I have to say is if Mr. Harrison was referring to me that way, I take sense from who, who they come from, you know? If he's referring to me, tough luck, Mr. Harrison. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you to all my, uh, council colleagues. Um, we have evolved and, you know, we're in our fourth year. Um, we have accomplished a lot. Um, and I just want to, I won't, uh, restate, uh, the comments made by Marge, uh, our, uh, Council Vice President, Marge Caldwell-Wilson. Um, she eloquently laid out the, one of the most important processes in the city, um, and to any municipality, is redevelopment. And she laid out very well what it is we, we are trying to accomplish for the city of Trenton. It's long overdue, and for anybody to come, you know, come forward and try to undermine that and discredit it in any way, um, I would just encourage them to really go out on your own and study. Look at other towns. Look at the, uh, study the local redevelopment and housing law of our, of our state. Study the local lands and building laws of our state. And then you understand the, how important redevelopment is and how important to have an autonomous agency of sorts like a redevelopment agency, um, created. The council, municipal council, wherever you like, who, who the, the electorate put forward, it's, we're all duly elected for four years. You get another opportunity to vote who you want back in. But while we are here, we have a fiduciary responsibility to implement certain things, and we could do that by ordinance. This is one of them. There's nothing in this government that was created, that was not created by ordinance by your elected council. So when you come here and say the council doesn't have the authority to do this, the council can't do that, you should go educate yourself and check yourself. Read and understand your government and how it operates. This is a city that's under the former government mayor council, under the Faulkner Act. Read the Faulkner Act before you come and make a fool of yourself. To sit here and say the legislative body, the duly elected council can't create an agency, can't do this and can't do that, look around you. We created the, 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 the Housing Authority. We created the Parking Authority. We create, we, we, the council created the Ethics Board. Not this council, but I, I'm speaking as the councils in general. It's your, it's your local council, it's your, it's your municipal council that passes the ordinance that creates, that runs this government, not the mayor. that passes the ordinance that creates, that runs this government, not the mayor. And you should read up and understand the duties of the mayor. If you understood the duties of the mayor, you would be able to hold him accountable. One of the first lines in the Faulkner Act, the duties of the mayor is to enforce all the ordinances of the, of the municipality. And we know that that is not happening because if it did, and the reason why, that, that duty is there because it's one of the most important duties. Because if the laws of the municipalities are not enforced, you get what we see here today, utter chaos. No growth, no nothing. If your executive, your mayor refuses to enforce the ordinances, the laws, zoning laws, the codes, um, uh, uh, trap, you know, public works, you got, you know, traffic. Oh, and Chamber Street, I believe, is a county road. So, uh, we may want to consult, uh, our Commissioner Frisbee or any other, uh, uh, county commissioners on that issue of getting those signs up. But I am, I really encourage every resident, every taxpayer, the electorate, to really get behind redevelopment in this city. Get behind, uh, creating and building out that redevelopment agency. It's one of the most critical elements of any municipality. Um, um, uh, we talk about our school board. We talk about all the other pillars that make up, uh, municipal government. They're all equally important, from the mayor's office to the council, to all the nine or ten departments. Every municipality has the same exact department. And they're constitutionally defined. So we need to strengthen. The Trenton City Hall is weakened. We need to build it out. Get all the framework in place. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars of contracts that leaves this city that residents don't benefit from. But we have laws on the books that enforces uh, uh, um, uh, compliance in getting, uh, ensuring that revenue funds that are earmarked for Trenton stays in Trenton and, and, and circulate in Trenton and, um, and continue to grow our socioeconomic space here. So I just, I'm excited, uh, about Trenton and its future. Um, there are so many other communities that, uh, that grew up out of concrete. Uh, we talked about New Brunswick on Tuesday. Uh, you got Jersey City, Hoboken, they're right in our states. Some of the same attorneys and professionals who helped build out those, uh, cities are here helping to, want to help Trenton. But we have to start working together and, and, and following the, the rules and, and, and following the provisions of good government, good government, good governance. Stop all the corruption and, 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 um, the, uh, the, uh, you know, um, I hate to say illegal, but you know, we're under a lot of subpoenas here in the city of Trenton. But, um, we need to, uh, 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 look at the framework that, 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 that's there, uh, to, to make, that, that, that allows for successful municipalities. So I'm on board. And, um, the, the last thing I will say is about the trash. I hope that we're out here, I, I say, I say to the business administrator, Adam Cruz, and the mayor, uh, you know, you guys are really, really getting a bad name out there, um, across Trenton, uh, not addressing the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the issue of, um, all the trash that's been lying in the streets over the past, uh, couple of weeks. I go outside in front of my house right now, my neighbors, everybody has trash cans lined up on the curb, ready, um, waiting to be picked up for the past two days. Um, so, and now we're headed for the snowstorm and, you know, uh, trash cans on the street just that, that, just, it's going to make, it's going to compound the issue of trying to clear streets that plow and all that stuff. So, um, uh, well, that's all I have to say tonight. Um, I look forward to seeing you all next meeting. And, uh, and start coming to a lot of the community forums. Um, I know the Planning Board, I know Economic Development Department. Um, uh, uh, Mr. Colin, the clerk's office has lots of critical information that we need your input on. Uh, we're trying to have those community forums that are, uh, by statute for communities to participate in. A lot of the redevelopment initiatives, we can't do without the community. So, and, 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 uh, so please, uh, get involved and, um, and start participating. Uh, thanks, Mr., uh, thanks, um, uh, Council President, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank, um, all of the residents and the directors for coming on this evening. I would, uh, like to just point out several things. Although you might not agree with this legislative body, our job is to lay a foundation so that the people that are coming behind us will have some type of guidance. And that's what we've been doing. We don't agree on a lot of things, but the things that we agree on are very important. I want to talk about the Trenton Public Schools. Under the pandemic, the Trenton Public School system had got, received millions of dollars. Millions of dollars. Everyone that studied the pandemic knows that our schools, most of them are old, and they needed new HVAC systems in order for those children to go back into those schools and have the quality air that they needed. But you don't hear anyone talking about that. Where is the money? Tuesday night, Councilman Rodriguez said that he had to move his grandson out of the state, out of Trenton's district because he's not getting, his needs aren't being addressed. He's a disabled child, but his needs aren't being addressed. Well, if you go to the Board of Ed, you'll find out that they have had at least seven to eight directors for special needs children for special education in the last three years. And under the pandemic, most of the children with special needs didn't even have, uh, virtual learning. They didn't have anything in place. But I don't hear a cry for the children. I don't hear it at all. This council tries to put forth legislation that will strengthen the city. And you come after us, you come here, you tell us your job. Then when you come out and you give false information and you're corrected, you want to say to us, oh, I made a mistake, but this is what you should do. My suggestion to each and every person that want to run for public office that want to do good in this community, you have to study the Faulkners Act. You have to understand where the legislative body powers lie. We don't have to grab for power for redevelopment. The legislative body is the redevelopment authority. But it's because certain people aren't doing their homework and they're crossing all kinds of boundaries. They don't understand it. And they're not doing their due diligence to try to understand what the duties of the legislative body is. You owe it to yourself before you come to these council meetings and start attacking people and calling them out. And you're not informed. And when we talk about the demolition, we, we, we were given eleven point five million under Christie to demolish the blight. They didn't want that. So they came back and said, you know what? We want to take half of that money for stabilization. What does that mean? Because if you demolish a home that's connected to an adjacent home, you know that you have to stabilize the other home. So then they cut that money in half. We went to a six-month calendar year. They said we would save thirty million dollars. They said that DCA granted us millions of dollars. But yet and still, they're putting fake liens on the property of our homeowners to generate cash. They pulled down the online payment service. Say you have to come into the city hall to pay. And then they closed the city hall down. So how are the people going to pay? The public has an obligation to do their job. Research. Research what affects you and affects the rest of the residents. And for each and every one of you that want to point a finger, remember this three fingers pointed back at you because you're not doing your job. All of us have an obligation. All of us. I've been in this city all of my natural life, and I have been on the front line in this city for over fifty years. And I'm telling you that before you come and start making accusations, the council is, uh, uh, grabbing for power. Understand where the powers lie. Understand what the duties are, what the duties of the council is, what the duties of the administration is before you start pointing your fingers. And I don't care about the minions that work with the administration. I care about the people. The people that don't have access to the internet, the people that don't have access to the, uh, to transportation, to children that don't have access to certain, uh, classroom, um, tutors, instructors. All of these things are going on in our city. Our murder rate is so high. And the thing that you hear is that the murder rate is going up all over the United States. And I said this the other night. This is only a five-square-mile city, seven with the Delaware River. When Coley was here, she said she didn't have enough technology. So she went out and got the money and got the state to help her with the crime center. Now we have the crime center, and we still are riddled with violence in this five-square miles. I am saying to each and every one of you, do your part, do your homework. And then you'll understand why we make the decisions that we make. And you'll understand that this is not an easy job. You come on as a part-time person, and you're working forty hours or more a week. And you're getting twenty thousand dollars a year versus a hundred and twenty-five thousand. You allow a mayor to give himself a raise, and you say nothing. They call us dysfunctional, but yet and still, all of the directors that he's went through in the past four years says that I think the dysfunctional person is the administration. So stop throwing your stones. Get more involved. Understand the Faulkners Act, understand the duties of the legislative body, and understand the duties of the administrative body. Then I think that we can get somewhere. And in the meantime, you all need to be paying close attention to the school board and to the children, to the children that are being left out, to the children that are now on virtual learning based on this Omicron that no one is talking about. No one is talking about how it is sweeping through the city, how our businesses downtown are almost closed, how our restaurants downtown, the few that we have left, they're closed because of Omicron. But no one's talking about that. You don't hold anybody's feet to the fire, but you come to the council barking. Do your homework. Do your homework. I think that if we did our homework, we'll all be in a better place. I think that if we stop pointing fingers, we'll all be in a better place. I think that if we understood the duties of the legislative body and the duties of the administration, we'll be in a better place. I want to take this time again to thank you for coming. I hope you do your homework about this redevelopment agency that we're trying to create. I hope that if there's one thing that this council can get done before they leave, before we leave, is that redevelopment agency. It is so important to move this city forward. It is very important. Do your homework, people. Do your homework. I thank you for listening, and I thank you for joining us this evening. And Mr. Colin, um, we can move for an adjournment, please.
I'm motion by Council President McBride to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Ms. Colleen Wilson, all in favor of adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we are adjourned at nine forty-eight PM. Thank you for coming tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, this is just a reminder. There'll be a Trenton City Wardman Commission meeting on Monday at six PM. You can find the link on the Trenton City website. Have a great night. If you're not already home, please get home safe.
Thank you.